This is the August 9, 2022, regular meeting of the Rockport City Council. I'll call this meeting to order and ask you to stand with us as Councilman Brian Drett leads us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. I am the mayor of the state of America and to the republic which is safe, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll establish a quorum. We'll have a roll call of council. Ward 1.
Aye.
Ward 2.
Aye.
Ward 3.
Aye.
Ward 4.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Note that we have a quorum present. First item on the agenda, citizens to be heard. At this time, comments limited to three minutes will be taken from the audience for persons who had signed the speaker's card located on the table in the back of the training room at the service center and delivered to the city secretary before the meeting begins. Or written on comments received by 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting, on any subject matter that is not on the agenda will be read and summarized in the minutes of the meeting. Persons wishing to address the council and who have registered using the citizen participation form will have up to three minutes to speak. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, council may not discuss or take any action on any item that has not been posted on the agenda. While civil public criticism is not prohibited, disorderly conduct or disturbance of the peace, as prohibited by law, shall be caused for the chair to terminate the offender's time to speak. We have any for items not on the agenda. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. All consent agenda items listed are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Does anyone wish to move any item from your...
Consent.
Number 7 will be discussed separately. Do I have a motion on items number 4, 5, and 6?
I move to approve the consent agenda items 4, 5, and 6.
Have a second.
I'll second that.
Any discussion or question? Call for a vote. Ward 1.
Aye.
Ward 2.
Aye.
Ward 3.
Aye.
Ward 4.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Number 7, we separated to go into detail. Counselperson... Made a note down here.
My issue with this is that we're really trying to level load across the wards. And I noticed that there's four people from Ward 4. We do have at least one person in Ward 1 who's eminently qualified to be on the zoning board of adjustment and building and standings commission. I'm going to mess up her first name. Patricia Bemrose.
Okay.
I would like her to be considered so that we can have a little more levelness throughout the wards.
We can table this one until our next meeting on the 23rd and look at any other applicants we have for that position and deal with it then if that suits everyone.
I make a motion to postpone agenda item number 7 until the next city council meeting on August...
23rd.
23rd.
Do I have a second? Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion or question?
Do we have any meetings for the zoning board of adjustments between now and then? We'll have one on...
Okay. Has there been a problem getting a quorum together for those?
Not in the last two meetings, I don't believe we have.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions? Motion is that we wait until the 23rd, take action on this item. Ward 1.
Aye.
Ward 2.
Aye.
Ward 3.
Aye.
Ward 4.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Next item on the agenda, number 9, deliberate and act on first reading of an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to allow for a quilt shop for property located at...
Public hearing, sir.
Okay. Two weeks ago, I got in a hurry and I was looking at my watch instead of the agenda. I don't have that excuse this time. I skipped one. Number 8, we have a public hearing. Conduct a public hearing on a proposal to increase solid waste, water, wastewater, and natural gas rates for all customers. Katie?
Good evening, mayor and city council members. I bring to you tonight a conversation in reference to the increase of utility rates. We have a proposed 3% increase for water, a 3% increase for wastewater, a 12.5% increase for natural gas, and a 3.83% increase for solid waste, which is a direct pass-through. These, the first three are as a result of a study that we do on an annual basis with NewGen. Matthew Garrett is online. He's going to, he should be available via Zoom and walk you through his presentation and tell you how we came to these rates. Some of the items that are included, so that you understand how the rates are looked at, have to do with our operating costs as well as our capital improvement costs. So you'll see that some of our rates, when you look at the presentation, may be a little bit higher than some of our neighbors. We're actually doing our rate increase in October along with our budget, where San Patricio Municipal Water District does not do their increase until late December. So our neighbors will do their adjoining rate increase following that in January. We were able to speak with them early and knew that there was about a 10% increase coming. So we programmed that into our operating budget for October so that we would have all the information needed to do a proper rate increase. So we did not have to come back to you in January to do a second rate increase.
Okay.
Matthew, can you hear us?
Yes, ma'am, I can. I'm not sure if I'm a presenter. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Excellent. Well, good evening, mayor and council. It's Matthew Garrett. See if I get the video working.
Yes, it is. You're, we can hear you now.
Oh, fantastic. And then, I'm not so sure if I can share screen. I can certainly try. I think it's disabled at the moment. Did you want me to walk through or do you have a presentation, Katie loaded, that you would click through for me?
We should have it where you can share it now. Kimberly should have gotten that set up for you.
Fantastic.
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you, Kimberly. And did I stop? Apparently I did. I apologize. So let me make this work. Please let me know if you can still see it.
We can.
Fantastic. In which case, let me go ahead and go to presentation. Thank you for bearing with me. Again, it's a pleasure to be back in front of you. I think there's some new faces on council. And so, welcome. And again, Matthew Garrett, we have worked with Rockport now for some years on these utilities. We've seen the ebb and flow of things. And as Katie mentioned, we have a little bit of capital programmed in. Certainly, your wholesale numbers are factored in, plus growth, some of our major assumptions. And we'll talk through some of those. At the same time, we've done a lot of work behind the scenes. While we can get into the detail, I'm going to try to keep it at a little higher level. Feel free to interject, pause, or bring me into some details that I may have glossed over if you had an interest in any of those. Do you want to talk about what revenues would do if we don't change rates? Since we are proposing an increase, they are insufficient, but we'll look at that and then talk about discussion and next steps. So again, a little bit about our firm. I do want to say more about the young lady that did most of the heavy lifting. Megan Kirkland did a fantastic job. She's worked with you now for two years and continues to do so. So kudos to her for her role. So what is a rate study? If this is your first time to go through it, it's similar to your budgeting at home. Little more complex, little bigger numbers typically. But we look at how much revenue do we need? And we bake that into the rates that we ultimately charge. But we do a few things that are not just expenses to determine how much our rates need to be. For instance, you have other revenues or revenue offsets that we back out. The second question really is who should be responsible for providing that revenue? There's a normative position that we would have each utility pay for itself over time, right? As an enterprise fund, that is a goal. It is not a mandate. And there are times, different swings in cost for various services. So one utility may pick up a little bit more from time to time. You'll see that as well. And then lastly, rate design. That's where it comes out of the numbers and into the art and into really the political realm. How do we want to affect our customers, our residents and businesses to achieve the revenue we need to make this utility function as it should? I heard a noise. If someone's raising their hand, please just interject because I don't see any prompts on my screen. So again, what are the revenue requirements? Take your total expenses, factor in the fact that we do need reserves. We can't operate on a shoestring budget. Storms do come, as Rockport knows. Additionally, we have other policies like debt service coverage. We have bonds out there in the market, and we've made pledges that say we will continue to achieve a certain level of revenues, plus operations and debt, and perhaps a little bit more. So we do have a target set for that. So the financial objectives are kind of listed here. Here are your key issues. So the top is the 10-year capital projects. We've looked out 10 years at this point. As you can see, it's a little bit more meaningful because you see we have not a lot going on necessarily in the out years, but we need to be looking ahead, right? These are long-term concerns. Consistent with one of the GFOA best practice guidances released this March, actually, Katie and our team looked at a 10-year as the best way to go about long-term forecasting, where we had previously looked at five. And so you'll see your capital plan over 10 years is $35 million, the bulk of which really is in the first five years, right? If you see, it gets a little smaller at $3 million per year. So we've looked at a five-year rate plan specific to meeting these needs that are more concerned in the near term. Obviously, we want to meet your day's operating cash, your debt service coverage. And then, the other issue is we do have some near-term growth that's expected to pick up, but we do anticipate that will taper back down. So we don't want to aggressively forecast growth since we can't really rely on a three-year number or a seven-year number to be spot on. So we'd rather be conservatively low on our growth for customer potential. That said, you have projected expenses. You see the wholesale costs make up the bulk of your expenses. That's generally true unless you have your own water supply and unless you do all of your own treatment on utilities around the state. The other portions, of course, are personnel. You have some other operating expenses and debt. And so you see this number is just shy of $9 million for water. Sort of the same chart, fewer bars here, really. We have the personnel piece, other operating and debt at just under $4 million for wastewater in the coming year, tracking up to about $5 million by the end of the 10-year horizon. For natural gas, this one actually has a few capital projects that start in and really increase that bar quickly. As you see in '25, it jumps quite a bit, right around $2 million today to almost $4 million in 2032. All right, so all on one screen, sort of the same information, but just to show you how we have the pie split effectively. Your wholesale cost on water clearly from Sand Pep make up a big portion. So too, a natural gas. You have a natural gas purchases that are done through a pass-through rate. It's called a gas cost adjustment factor. That is not in the rates that we show you. That is a separate pass-through that Katie and her utility billing team put on the bills. But I know you've recently gone through or will be going through budgets, so I don't want to take you into every line item. This is how it summed up in the coming year. So that said, we, I mentioned at the beginning that a revenue requirement, the nuance is it's not just the expenses. It's the expenses less some non-rate revenues. In Rockport for water, you have about $1 million, so $983 in non-rate revenues. Ultimately, we end up needing $8.2 million or $8.3 for water and $3.4 for wastewater. The way we do that is we go through a detailed listing of every account, attempt to allocate the best uses. Some items are 100% water, some are 100% wastewater, clearly some overlap. And so we've made those delineations with Katie and team. And that's how it kind of shakes out for responsibility by utility or service within the water and wastewater fund. In natural gas, we have $331,000 in non-rate revenues, bringing down that $2 million expense I mentioned earlier into a rate requirement of 1.7 or 1.8. So that said, a lot of data here. Forgive me if this is small. This is one of our new challenges as we present 10-year forecasts, is getting it all visible on one screen. But you can see that we have water and wastewater split up in the first two major bands horizontally. And so you can see that water, if we were to break them up and require each to pay for itself, is doing just fine until 2026. We see that wastewater is a little bit under recovery now, but continues that pattern through the 10-year horizon. So all this chart really tells us is that we can't stay here because it's not sufficient to meet our needs and long-term objectives as set forth previously. So too on gas. Unfortunately, gas is starting off in a bad position. We do anticipate that is going to turn with the rate increases that we've proposed. But we need to get that into a positive fund balance reserve. We need to get our coverage right. And if we don't change something in our natural gas rates based on our capital demands, we effectively will be underwater. So the proposed rates, Katie already alluded to many of them. What you have in front of you is the 10-year rate plan expressed as a simple percentage. Right now, we're applying a pretty uniform approach. You have a nice structure relative to your minimum charges where you have a meter equivalency. In that, that means that your larger meters will pay more because they put more demand on your system. That is an industry standard. You're already doing it, so we're going to leave that intact. Additionally, you send price signals, what we call a conservation price signal, because you have an inclining block rate on your volumetric charges towards the bottom. What that allows you to do is charge more for those users that will put peaks or initial demands in the season, watering season, and they will pay more for that consumption. So you're able to curtail a little bit, hopefully, your system design. Again, we go through each of the rate changes. You have each of these slides. The percent is actually across the board. And so for all the rate charges we have, you have the outside city here affected by the same 3%. You also have this wholesale component with a volumetric charge going up 629. And the wastewater rates. Again, as we pointed out earlier, wastewater needs a little bit more to get over the hump. And so we have increases every year shown here at 3%, 2.75, and so on. This would affect the minimum charges and volumetric, as you see. So too for commercial. So the same percentage applied across the board. And then we've looked at the rates. We've talked about how we're affecting them in the coming year. Do they meet our objectives? And that's what this slide or schedule is meant to show you. While we haven't overcome necessarily the wastewater hurdle fully, we're making an impact on it, and we are in the black effectively at the end of our 10-year horizon. Additionally, if you look at your fund balance reserve at the bottom, we have what we call these key performance indicators around your day's cash on hand and your debt service coverage ratio. You'll see that with the rate plan, one of our indicators got really close in 2026 at that 1.11. We would say those are rate drivers. So if we were to do any less in the near term, we'd have to do more in '26 to meet that target. So we try to smooth out the rate impact. So we look at this more steady with increases annually that we can check and confirm before we apply, instead of taking big chunks or waiting until we have a huge hill to climb with a large increase, preferably as you've done in your water and wastewater rates. So for comparisons, this is how you stack up. I think Katie mentioned some maybe changing rates later. Many of these communities are looking at their rates. We do work with a few of them. We don't know their rates yet as proposed, or certainly not adopted. But everyone else is looking at this, this time of year that has a 10-1 fiscal year. This is your average effective user with 6,000 gallons of water and 5,000 for wastewater. And you see that that bumps it up a little over to about $250 per month. This is a customer with 10,000 gallons, both for water and for wastewater. That change, as you see, is just a little under $4. Any questions on water rates? I know I've gone through this quickly. All right, hearing none. Moving into gas rates. Again, we did talk about this utility needs the most help. It also has the biggest increases that are required because it has a substantial capital need in the near term against fewer units, right? We have less gas to bill for than our broader water units. And we have some compliance-related projects that we just have to get done in the near term. So hence, you see the rate plan here, moving that up from a minimum charge of $26.74 up to $30.08, and the volumetric rate per CF at $297 to $334. Here's what that impact is. So again, 2.7 is your average usage. Clearly, natural gas is a seasonal, generally for most consumers, at least residential, pretty seasonal, depending on the service and various electrification things they may have in their home. Whereas your commercial users may be more consistent in their application or use of gas. So for your average resident, it's going to be about $434 more per month. And then you see it's $519 more for someone using almost, a little under half, I'm sorry, a little over double the norm. All right. So again, we did say we're kind of digging out of a hole a little bit, right? Where we want the natural gas utility to be made whole over time, but we want to do it in steps. We don't want to go and ask for a 50% increase in year one. And so you'll see us phasing into getting back to the green over time. Additionally, there may be some projects that we have programmed that may or may not happen. They may or may not come in at the amounts we've projected. So again, while we show 12.5% per year, we do think you should look at this annually and sort of right-size the rates needed at the time. So we're able to look at the senior capital project listing and say with confidence, based on today's assumptions, we can fund it through the rate plan that you have. We will meet the financial objectives and policies because that was a requirement for us to have rates that work. And then we've sort of addressed the near-term growth. But looking at that tapering off, as most clients are doing these days, as we're a little bit concerned about rate hikes, et cetera. So we're not betting on the come. We aren't relying too heavily on continued growth that should sustain us as opposed to carrying our own with maybe a more modest growth rate. For instance, we have the growth rate dropping off by about 50 new homes for water in the next year, or in year two. So in 2024, starting at $425 down to $375. The next year, it's $225. And so, again, conservative and more conservative down to a 200 per year number where we kind of hold it flat through the horizon. So those are sort of the final results. There's a little bit to peel back and discuss if you had any questions. But with that, I'll pause and turn it back over to staff or council if there's nothing else.
Yes, Katie?
So now, follow-up. We have provided you guys, this is the first step of what we're going through tonight. We've also got other agenda items in which we'll come back to you and look at each of these rates individually. But as Matthew pointed out, this allows us to absorb the operational costs as we increase. We've included in there any growth that we have predicted. And of course, we do know that we're growing rapidly around here and that we could grow faster, which may help us in the future not have to raise our rates as high. It also includes the wholesale cost increase that we were notified by Sand Pep. They told us to expect a 10% increase. That's supposed to happen late December. And also includes all of our CIP projects that are not currently funded with another source. And we spent a little bit of time in the budget workshops discussing this back when Richard was with us, and then again, a little bit later. So each of those are in there, and that's why you're seeing an increase in debt. And that's so that when it's time we can go out and do revenue bonds in order to pay for those. Those are not covered with or secured with property tax that is based only on the revenue. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have. And we have Matthew standing by for any additional questions.
Off here. I know we had talked earlier, and I kind of just want to explain this more so in open forum. I had two questions. Let's go back to the CIP product. Sorry, the CIP discussion. What are the numbers on our CIP project that we need to get done in the city for the wastewater and water?
You all will flip with me. So we have coming up, we have many items, and I don't know if I brought the full CIP list with me. But among those items, we have our wastewater treatment plant. We do have some ARCA funds that we're doing. We have line repairs throughout the city, not actually lines, but extensions. As the city continues to grow, we'll have additional needs. And we have some force main upgrades that we're going to be looking at. Our SCADA needs to be updated. And as I mentioned, we have sewer lines and check valves that we will be replacing throughout the city.
No, you had given me two totals. Do you have those?
In two totals. I do pull it up on my phone. I did not bring that with me. I apologize. 10-year totals, is that what you're asking me?
For the capital improvement projects.
Sorry?
For the capital improvement projects, yeah.
Give me just a second to pull that up. My computer, so I didn't bring it with me. I just have the one here in front. I want, I apologize. If you'll give me a second, I can pull that up.
I have it right here.
If you'll give me just a second, I can pull it up. But I didn't, I did not prepare well. I did not bring that with me tonight. That's the one thing I didn't... Just a second. But we do have multiple items that we're looking at, revenue funded as well as tax funded. See how slow our computer can work tonight.
If it's okay while she pulls that up, I have...
If it's okay while she pulls that up, I have a question for Mike. Is it okay? Mike, at the workshop, we talked about looking at the 2012 comparison for water restrictions under drought conditions. Did we have a chance to take a look at that? Just want to make sure we're going to hit our targets this year. I actually do have another one that I think Mike can take. We talked a lot about the gas system, capital projects. Can you just, for the purposes of our audience, talk through the required line replacements that are under our regulatory piece?
We are under regulatory compliance from the Texas Railroad Commission to replace the steel, the steel pipe within our system. We have approximately 12 miles of steel pipe within the system. We're under regulatory compliance to replace about 8% of that per year until we get it all replaced. We've been asking for some extensions, working with the Railroad Commission. And our consultant that we're working with has been very helpful to us. But we do have to, we are mandated to take care of that within the next. I want to say we've got, we could probably get it done within four to six years. But we've got some other plans that we're looking at for the gas system to try to help us get over that.
Okay, just to confirm. So in the analysis that we're being presented with, maybe this back to you, Matthew, that capital demand that was just described, that's, that's put into your analysis currently?
Yes, ma'am. And actually, it occurred to me when I reverted back to that screen that I had shared a earlier revision, and I do apologize. So what you see is the corrected, you may have noticed zeros here. But I still had my total right. So again, my apologies, I grabbed the wrong copy. So if that was a point of clarification, I did want to bring back that the packet you have should mirror what I have on screen.
The totals were correct, but it had zeros as far as the out-years on the gas project, if I remember correctly.
Right. And I believe if we included that in your packet, the corrected version was there. So forgive me for grabbing the wrong copy.
So to answer Andrea's question, we have a total of 17,457,000 in water and wastewater capital projects over the next 10 years. For water, that's 6,185,000. And wastewater is 11,272,000. And that's for our future years. Those projects include many different things going forward. The major ones for wastewater are the rehabilitation of our wastewater treatment plant. We are using some ARPA funds and unspent bond funds to take care of that. Force mains, the check valves at Rockport Country Club, the SCADA system, a second force main. Both of those are associated with Gagon going in different directions. And then our online, ongoing sewer replacements program, sewer line replacement program. And that's what brings us to 10 years' worth of 11 million.
Okay, thank you. And then I had one other question. I apologize. I'm taking a notice that on the comparison chart for us to other neighboring cities, that we're pretty high up on that chart. Is there a reason why we're so high on that chart? And I know you had gave an explanation on that as well.
A little bit of homework, Matthew, this is a little bit like what we talked about. But it appears that Rockport's kind of ahead of schedule as far as getting our rates and our rate study put together and brought to our city council. We like to do things in conjunction with our budget rather than coming back to you in January and ask to do a rate increase. So making a few phone calls, we were able to determine that Port Lavaca is looking at a 25% increase. Aransas Pass is looking at a 2.39 increase for water and a 9.8 increase for wastewater. A couple of our other towns that are way down on our list, we have Alice, Kingsville, and Victoria. They do not currently have a rate increase scheduled. However, it's been several years since they've had one. And they could possibly look at doing one in the near future, but they're not as far in their budget cycle as we are. Keep in mind, Portland generally does theirs in January. But of course, they're a little bit ahead of us on this scale. And we do know that Corpus Christi is getting ready to go through a rate study and we anticipate their rates to increase as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Any further questions? Good. We'll close the public hearing. Go to agenda item number nine that I started with a little while ago. Deliberate and act on first reading an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to allow for quilt shop with property located at 2922 FM 1781, also known as Spanish Woods Estates, lot number 53B, being 1.148 acres. City of Rockport, Ranges County, Texas, subject to compliance with the conditions stated within the ordinance as well as those stipulated in the City of Rockport Code of Ordinances, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. I have a card to speak on this item, Mr. Bill Porter. If you'd come to the microphone down here, please, sir. Give your name and address and got three minutes.
My name is Bill Porter. I'm the neighbor, 2942 FM 1781. My only concern, and I voiced it in my response when I got the mailing, is that the lights need to shine, not at my house that she's using to, I guess, for security lighting on, on the air-conditioning equipment so that that doesn't get vandalized or anything happened to it in the nighttime hours. I'd like that light pointed at the building rather than pointed at my house. And I don't know what that's going to take, put a pole up, do something. But when the, when the Jehovah Witness was there, they had a big light in the, in the front yard that shone light down straight. That was their security lighting. And that wasn't an issue for me. But now since the quilt shop moved in and she's re-aimed them a couple of times, but they still shine right at my house. And, and it's, I can't watch the stars. I can't watch the fireworks. I can't. It's like I'm in the middle of a baseball field on a night game. And it bothers me. And I would like to see that be a condition of, of getting fixed before this CUP is approved.
Yes, sir. We have the meters to do that. I'll, if we could get with me before you leave, I'll get some information from you.
That's fine, sure. Yeah. That's my only concern. I mean, that, that's it. That's it. Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening, counsel. This is the cup requested by Ms. Lanier for her quilt shop on FM 1781. As we talked about before, she bought the property about two years ago and opened her quilt shop, not realizing that it wasn't zoned for it. And when she was informed that she needed to rezone or get a cup, she immediately came down and started the process. We will speak to her about her lighting and make sure it gets redirected and not shining on the neighbor's property. And she is here also if you have questions. If you want to talk.
Hi, my name is Darlene Lanier. Concerning the lighting, I have done no improvements, no changes. The lighting there is exactly as I bought it. So it's been there forever. And when they came to me, a little after, about a week or so after I moved in, I did have my handyman move it to where it's pointing straight down. And we put it as far down as we could to where it wasn't shining on there. So I did address that, but I didn't do any changes when I bought it. It was that way with the Jehovah Witness Church.
Yes, sir. We'll work with both halves on it. We'll come out, take a reading, and we'll work with both of you to.
And I'll get it corrected, whatever I can do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions for these folks? This is the first reading. There'll be a second reading. By the second reading, we can get a report on the light situation. If there are no questions, do I have a motion on number nine?
I'll make the motion to accept the first reading as written.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. And the vote is whether to pass this particular measure on first reading. Word one.
Aye.
Word two.
Aye.
Word three.
Aye.
Word four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Item number 10, deliberate and act on first reading an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to allow the use of manufactured home on the property at Zoned R1, first single-family dwelling district located 826 Holly Road, also known as S3925 McCombs subdivision. Lot 6, 2.00 acres, City of Rockport, Ranges County, Texas, subject to compliance with the conditions stated within this ordinance as well as those stipulated in City of of Rockport Code of Ordinances, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for severability and providing an effective date. Yes, ma'am.
His property, which actually is already there. He said that they were not aware they had been annexed and it was always their intention to put the manufactured home on the property. Currently, there is also a mother-in-law's suite and a carport and several RVs. I'm not sure how many. P&amp;Z recommends that to approve the cup, stipulate that the RVs must be removed within 90 days of the second reading. And if they're not, then the cup is revoked and it will all have to go. And he agreed to that. He was, he was agreeable to that. And I don't know why, but he's not here this evening. Oh, okay. Someone's here.
Yes, sir. We agreed to the 90-day to remove the existing RVs and be in compliance.
What's your name?
Ernest McAllister. So I'm here on behalf of my son, Jamie McAllister. He had to take his son to college. I'm here for him today. And basically, he told me that, that that's what had to happen. We had to remove. We've got actually three RVs there. One of them is a 2020, but it's one that we use all the time. And the other two are older, which we will remove the other two. If we could just keep the one that we use to go, you know, back and forth to the beach or camping with. It's a newer model and it's not hooked up. You know what I mean? It's just, it's just there. No, sir? Thank you.
No questions?
The RV is an accessory structure. It's not hooked up to water, sewer, gas, power. That, it's just a storage, being stored there.
I'm not certain. Code enforcement had, was there, and I have photos from them. One appears to be occupied because it's fenced and it's really cute. But it may just be what they did. I don't know. Honestly, don't know. And they were told that they could store one. They could keep the one and store it there, just couldn't be used.
That shouldn't be a violation of
No.
of anything, having a RV stored there, correct?
Correct.
But the others, the others would be.
Need to go. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions, counsel? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve agenda item number 10 with the P&amp;Z recommendation of the as read by, but also adding to be removed by 90 days after the second reading of RVs to be removed by 90 days.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Have any further discussion or debate? And the motion should be that we pass on first reading conditional use permit in this case. Word one.
Aye.
Word two.
Aye.
Word three.
Aye.
Word four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Item number 11, deliberate and act on first reading an ordinance amending the City of Rockport Code of Ordinances, Chapter 106 Vegetation, Article 1, General, and Article 2 Tree Regulations, repealing all ordinances to the extent that they are in conflict, providing for severability and providing an effective date. You're busy tonight.
Okay, so this is the final draft. We made some, a little bit of changes since the one you saw in the last. And it is to add the penalty clause. Every tree that's removed is a separate violation. We also added at the very end, the mitigation fees. It talks in there about the mitigation fees for removing trees, even permitted, whatever, and we had no dollar amount. So we added the tree mitigation fee in lieu of replanting. That's what it is. $50 per inch of mitigation. Now that's, we threw that number in there. You can raise it, you can lower it, whatever you please. But $50 is kind of an average of what other cities charge for mitigation fees in lieu of replanting. And those, those monies would go into the account, the tree mitigation fee account. Do you have any questions?
For ages, I think. And hope that we've got it down to something we can live with for a while. Anyone have any questions?
Just one quick question. The $50 mitigation, who is we? Is that staff or was that committee recommended?
A combination. We, Bryce added it in at the end because we had discussed it prior. And I completely forgot about it. So thankfully, Bryce remembered.
Please be advised that we use a planning consultant that is working for Dent Navarro, the same legal firm that we use. We have a planning consultant that we work with on this ordinance. We researched multiple municipalities and their ordinances to see what they had, and that is the average. And this is like the mayor said, this is something we've been working on for about two and a half years. And this was something we passed through the tree committee before it came to you to ensure that we are on the same track and the mindset that they wanted moving forward. And they're all in agreement with this proposal.
Yes, I emailed it to all of them when it was sent for the agenda and they, I got approvals. I got kudos from them. They like it, so.
And this has been a very important issue to a lot of people in our community for a long time. I'm glad we've got it to this point. Do I have any further questions from counsel? Now, do I have a motion?
I will be happy to make a motion to approve Agenda as Read.
Do I have a second?
Agenda item number 11.
I believe this is actually the second reading, right? No, it is the first? Okay.
All right, I have a motion and a second. That we approve the changes to the tree vegetation ordinance. There's no further debate? Ah, I wasn't looking. Katie? All right, there's no further questions or debate. Word one.
Aye.
Word two.
Aye.
Word three.
Aye.
Word four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Glad we got that passed. Thank you. All right. Item number 12 on the agenda. Deliberate and act on first reading an ordinance amending City of Rockport Code of Ordinances, Chapter 98 Traffic and Vehicles, Article 6 Golf Carts and Neighborhood Electric Vehicles, repealing all ordinances to the extent that they are in conflict, providing for severability and providing an effective date. Chief? I have got one person would like to talk to this one before you get going. I just picked my card back up. Jim Smith.
Good evening. My name is Jim Smith and I live at 370 Johnson Drive. I usually don't speak at these council meetings, but I do take and listen and I observe. And I'm here tonight to speak about golf carts and the safety of the golf carts. And I'm here tonight to speak about golf carts and the safety of the golf carts. And a few weeks ago, the chief of police had concerns about registrations. And it's an opportunity for me to talk about the safety of golf carts. They're fun and they're good for the city, but they come with responsibility. And there should be responsibility by the drivers of these golf carts. And the council several years ago worked for weeks to adopt this, an ordinance for golf carts. During the past year, I've seen many violations of this ordinance. And there's a lot of safety issues on these golf carts that need to be addressed. Children driving golf carts, not following safety regulations such as rules of the road, no turn signals, no registrations. And also, the biggest thing is no seat belts. And I see it in more than half of the go-karts on the road with no seat belts. I happened to be in a city several years ago, not Rockport, but another city, and I happened to see an accident with a golf cart. A woman in the golf cart was not wearing a seat belt and she got knocked completely out of the golf cart and she hit her head on the pavement and split her head wide open. And it was quite a nasty scene. And just recently, up in Galveston, there was an accident at an intersection south of Galveston. And it wiped out everybody on the golf cart. Two adults and two children. And that's just recent. I think that in the future, the golf carts are going to increase and we need to look at the safety concerns of operating these on the roads in Rockport. Following, several years ago, I know that wasn't it. There is, we need to do something about these golf carts with the safety concerns, whether it be publications, education.
We appreciate that, Mr. Smith. Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, counsel, if you recall here, just a, I don't think it was the last meeting, the one before that, we brought to you for discussion before we brought this ordinance and had it, or revision to ordinance and had it reviewed by legal to update the current golf cart and electric neighborhood vehicle ordinance. One of the biggest issues that needed revision are off-highway vehicles or OHVs. They're not included in our ordinance, but they are discussed in state law and they've become very popular around the city. A lot of residents have them and have begun operating them. And so it's my belief that we need, as a city, you as the council, need to make a decision to include them in the ordinance or to not. It's my recommendation that we include them in the ordinance and allow for them the same way we do golf carts as well as neighborhood electric vehicles. And then also some other revisions that you can see in here that we put together and that legal has approved. And during that discussion, Councilwoman Jackson brought up enforcement and I appreciate the comments from before. And I'm the first to acknowledge the police department's not done a great job over the last few years of enforcement. So taking that into account, I've had discussions with our folks to step up enforcement. We have done that, in fact, through citations, warnings, and we've in fact impounded a golf cart was being driven on a sidewalk here just about a week ago, give or take. So we're committed to that, to the safety aspect of it. I'm familiar with golf carts, with some accidents I've dealt with and throughout my career. While they are, I think, good and they bring some value, they also bring some hazard. So will the off-highway vehicles or the OHVs. We don't have, I don't think, any of the neighborhood electric vehicles that I've seen. Nonetheless, they're all in this one large group and there are some hazards associated with it, with these, which I think are well identified. And we are conscious of that and we're committed to that safety aspect of it. Councilwoman Hale pointed out that we should also review the fees that we charge as a city. And so we did that. We reached out to several of the coastal bend region cities and we are quite low with our associated fees. So the average, as we discussed in the last agenda item, I put in there $50. We've been charging $10 historically for many, many years. Again, that's for y'all's discussion. I just put into the draft ordinance 50 bucks because that is about the average. Some of the cities, Port Orangias is much higher. The other cities are coming in around the $50 mark. I think it's something for y'all to discuss. I'm happy to chime in on that. The biggest change, I think, though, to this, the biggest revision to the ordinance is to outsource the inspection of the golf carts and the OHVs and if we do have neighborhood electric vehicles, EVs. As you're aware, the manpower with the police department, both in terms of sworn officers and the very few civilian employees that we have, that's not going to grow in this budget year and it hasn't grown for many years. However, the city's growing and so our tasking, be it calls for service, administrative duties, what have you, those are growing. And so in order to accomplish the tasks that we have, I'm looking at things that we can do more efficiently. And these inspections are something I think we can outsource and create more efficiency in what we're doing. One of the biggest, most of the police officers, they're really doing these inspections without a lot of knowledge, where a golf cart company has a great deal of knowledge, much like your vehicle, your automobile is inspected by a service station. This is the same thing here, to outsource that to experts, to do those inspections. Another big part of that, I'm not a fan of bringing cash into the police department, especially on the weekends, where when our administrative coordinator shows up, there's just cash on the desk or in a drop box with some paperwork and it's just not a great control measure. I know that our finance director doesn't care for that either. I would just assume we issue out the permit stickers to the outside vendors with a tracking system and then they have that cash and it goes directly to finance through a much more controlled means and I don't have a bunch of cash laying around the police department. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have for me.
You've got a few questions for you. Class C misdemeanors, just a regular moving violation on any violations that these have?
By and large, yes, sir. The rules for operating a golf cart are very much like for an automotive. You have to be a licensed operator, so 16 years at least of age or older. However, if you have suspended license and things like that, it can creep up higher. DWI can come into, so there are some higher level of offenses that can come into play. But by and large, there'll be classy offenses that would run through the municipal court here in.
So basically, it's just like operating a regular motor vehicle on the roadway?
Yes, sir.
If you fall short of the ordinance, then you may be talking to one of the guys. So.
Absolutely.
Okay. Second, you talked about the golf cart stores that are going to do the inspections. Do we have any that we've identified yet?
There's two that have shown interest, that really kind of brought the idea to us. It's something we had talked about already, but there are two in town. There is the golf store and they rent them out of the duck blind and then the coffee store.
Harbor carts?
Yeah, I think that's right, over on Business 35. So there's two already that are interested, have shown great interest to be involved in it. And again, to me, it'll be up to the police department to approve these locations and quite honestly, if an automotive, anybody that's qualified, we'll go, we'll make sure they know what they're doing and then we'll sign off on those. So we don't want to have a monopoly on it. We just want qualified people, quite frankly, I think more qualified than the police officer to do it, so that we know the inspections are done well. But most importantly, we get it off of our plate so that our folks can be out patrolling neighborhoods. And quite honestly, as we discussed last time with Councilwoman Jackson, so I could go patrol for violations rather than have the call to return to the police department on a Saturday morning to inspect a golf cart while I've got nine or 10 running around violating the ordinance.
Not saying that our guys would, guys and girls would, pencil whip it, but it might be pencil whipped if, you know, getting through the inspection real quick.
Well, I don't know so much about that as so much as it is, as they're looking at it going, I guess this is right, you know? Because again, they're not, they don't build golf carts. So they just don't have the expert knowledge that the outside vendors will have.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Absolutely.
Chief, I know we talked about accountability on the stickers and some kind of cracking and blah, blah, blah. I know that's more of a probably after the ordinance has been enacted, but have we gone any farther on some kind of accountability on, you know, those?
Yes, but they're already serialized, so it's really going to be easy to do that. I think we just, we either, of course, I'm a fan of technology that we do, but we can use a ledger book, whatever we need to, to have those serialized so that the vendor, they're accountable for however many permit stickers that they have and they owe the city whatever the agreed-upon amount is and whatever fee you, council members agree on, if it's $50 or whatever it is, and if that's a split, or again, whatever you agree on, if it's 25 and 25, if they've checked out 100, you know, stickers, they owe us $25 for each sticker or whatever that amount is that you've given. I think that's going to be quite easy to track.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else?
Chief, we talked about the total number and I think we had a ballpark last time, 250, 300. Did you have a chance to kind of tidy that up a little bit?
I did, and I, it's been, as the city manager and I discussed, it's been a remarkably busy week that we're two days into and that information is sitting on my desk, but I can email you that as soon as we get done.
Near what we discussed?
It's nearly exactly what we discussed. It wasn't far off at all.
Smaller red box, bigger red box. Okay, so Katie's going to hate me on this, but so say we're saying 300 a year, we bumped this up to 50 bucks, we're going to split it with the stores, you know, we're looking at 7,500 bucks a year potentially coming into the city. How are we going to mark that and is it to a point where we might want to look at maybe a special revenue account so that it can be reinvested in education outreach for this purpose? I mean, small dollars, you're not going to want to track it, but how do we log this
Revenues are coded according to where they, what bucket they fall into. Establish a special revenue fund for $7,500 is almost not cost prohibitive. It's a lot of work on staff in order to set those funds up and to maintain them. We can establish a specific revenue line item so that we know how much revenue is coming in specific to those. We currently do that. As far as expenditures, we can determine how you want those spent and then we can track those accordingly as well, without establishing a separate fund.
I know it's not much, but there's no doubt we need to do a better job communicating with our public and stepping up opportunities with our community, especially our visitors. I mean, they're the ones, I think, Brad, you talked about bringing, you know, they haul it down for the weekend and have a good time and take it back out. So it's not much money, but 7,500 bucks for you means a little bit, you know?
If I may, I would say that some of that, again, with the manpower constraints that we live under, one of the most effective ways to, you know, to enforce the golf cart ordinance, especially on holiday weekends, would be with overtime officers that are dedicated to that. Sometimes the public may look at that and think, we don't have anything better to do than hunt down golf cart violators. However, as we kick this off, there's, to me, whenever you have an issue, and I agree with the speaker before, it's an issue that we have that people, I mean, again, when you see a golf cart driving down the sidewalk, you have an issue in your community. And so the two big ways to deal with that is education, number one, because our hope is voluntary compliance, right? That's what we hope to have. To attain that would be education through social media, pamphlets, things like that. But also, there is that enforcement part of it. And when I'm already at a, you know, we're at a point where I'm trying to get this off our plate because of how busy we are already, well, it's difficult to say, hey, I want you guys and gals on the weekend to look for golf carts, but they're going call to call to call. We could use some of this revenue to bring in an officer off duty and have them go out and do all kinds of traffic enforcement, to include golf cart violations as well. That would be one of my ideas, but also take some of that money, get some pamphlets made up, do social media, things like that, to make sure the public is aware of the dangers and also of our commitment to try to prevent accidents through enforcement actions as well as that education piece.
I'm good. I kind of challenge you, Vanessa, figure out how you can get creative with this, but other than that, I'm good with the ordinance.
Any other questions?
Question, just a statement. If we move forward with the ordinance, I would like to see some pub ed come out of it. And like you said, some enforcement, but you want voluntary compliance. We just, I think it'd be beneficial to get that out there to the public, know what the ordinance is. And I don't know the best way to do it. Other, you know, social media, pamphlets, but it's our people that are coming in that don't know.
Correct.
Our tourists. So I don't know. It's how we tackle that.
Well, again, we don't want to be heavy-handed with it, but we do, and a lot of our followers, we have a very, we have a good following on social media. We have several accounts, several platforms, and many of those are out-of-town, part-time residents, if you will. And so the more we campaign on that, the more people are aware. And also, as they come into town and get their permits, we want to have pamphlets available at the outside vendors and make it as a requirement that, hey, when they get this inspection done, you are required also to give them this pamphlet that explains the rules of the road. Children can't be driving them, can't be on the sidewalks, no roads over 35 miles an hour, things of that nature.
Gotcha.
And the chamber would be good to help us with that. They can get that to people that call in or come to visit and so forth. They've always been really good at helping us get that kind of information out, too.
Absolutely.
Anything else? If not, do I have a motion?
I move to accept item 12 as read.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Any further question or debate? If not, we'll call for a vote. Word one.
Aye.
Word two.
Aye.
Word three.
Aye.
Word four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Item number 13, I'm not skipping again, I'm looking at the numbers down here and can't read them. Deliberate an act on first reading of ordinance amending the City of Rockport Code of Ordinances, Chapter 102 Utilities, Article 2 Water Service, Division 3 Service Charges by amending water rates for all customers, providing for validity of said ordinance, repealing all prior ordinances in conflict herewith and providing for an effective date.
Good evening. So we had our public hearing just a few moments ago. This is the first of two council agenda items where we come to you with the ordinance. And what this ordinance does is it has updated the rates to include the 3% increase and you'll see these rates going into effect in the first full billing cycle within the next fiscal year.
All right. Any further questions? Voice is going away, too. If there are no further questions, do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, second. Any further question or debate? Not, we'll call for a vote. Word one.
Aye.
Word two.
Aye.
Word three.
Aye.
Word four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Item 14, deliberate an act on first reading of an ordinance amending the City of Rockport Code of Ordinances, Chapter 102 Utilities, Article 3 Wastewater Service, Division 4 Service Charges by amending wastewater rates for all customers, providing for the validity of said ordinance, repealing all prior ordinances in conflict herewith and providing for the effective date. Katie?
Mayor and counsel, this is the second of our rate increases that follows our public hearing, following up on our rate increase study that was done by NewGen. And this increases all of our wastewater rates by 3% across the board. The attached ordinance does that and again, it will go into effect the first full billing cycle of the next fiscal year.
All right. Further questions? Do I have a motion?
I move to approve item 14 as read.
Further questions? I have a motion and a second. Call for a vote. Word one.
Aye.
Word two.
Aye.
Word three.
Aye.
Word four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Item number 15, deliberate an act on first reading of an ordinance amending the City of Rockport Code of Ordinances, Chapter 102 Utilities, Article 5 Natural Gas Service, Division 3 Service Charges. Chapter 102 Utilities, Article 5 Natural Gas Service, Division 3 Service Charges, by amending natural gas rates for all customers, providing for the validity of said ordinance, repealing all prior ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date. Katie.
Good evening. So this is our third utility rate increase that we're bringing to you tonight. This is the most substantial and the one that hurts the most for our residents. It does request to increase our natural gas rates by 12.5%. Attached, you'll find the ordinance that does that. Again, it does go into effect for the first full city council meeting, I'm sorry, first full billing cycle in October of the next fiscal year.
Further questions?
How many taps do we have? Gas taps?
Um, like...
Well, well below our water.
I totally went, like, um, we have 400 out in Lamar, and I believe there's another 2,700 between, on this side of the bridge. There are about 30, 3,350 total.
Well, well below our water taps and, and...
About a, a fourth of what we have for water.
Okay.
Further questions? If not...
I can let you know, I can come back to you with a full number of those if you'd like. Kind of give you a breakdown.
I was just trying to equate it per use, you know?
That's part of the reason that the rate increases are so substantial is because we do have a smaller number of customers and a smaller growth trend than what we have in water and wastewater.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a motion.
Move to approve item 15 as read.
Motion and second, approve item 15 as read. Any further question or debate? Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Number 16, deliberate an act on reading of ordinance amending the City of Rockport Code of Ordinances, Chapter 82 Solid Waste, Article 2 Refuse Collection, Section 82.39 Fee Schedule, setting new fees for service, repealing all prior ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing for publication and an effective date.
So this is the final one I'm asking for tonight. This is for solid waste. This is a pass-through. This city currently contracts with Republic Services, and they bill us, we bill our customers, and then we pay that back to them. They do also pay us a 6% franchise fees, but we do all of the building, billing and 99% of the customer service needs. So what they do is they provide us a CPI increase each year. Last year it was 3.5%. This year their increase is a 3.83% across the board. That does go on the totes for the homeowners as well as commercial dumpsters and carts.
All right.
Again, this will be affected the first full billing cycle of the next fiscal year. And this is reading number one.
Any further questions or comments?
When do we renegotiate this contract?
We are going into the fifth year of the existing contract, so it's time for us to start talking. So I believe Mr. Reeves, Mike Reeves is our representative, he had asked back when Richard was here to come in and ask us to extend the contract, and Richard and I talked about it. We determined we didn't want to do that. We wanted to have the opportunity to do an RFP or to take another avenue if you also chose for us to do so. So that's something we'll probably be bringing to you right after the first of the year to begin that process.
All right. Thing further? Do I have a motion? I'll do it. I'm making a motion. We pass item 16 on first reading.
I'll second.
Any further question or debate? We'll call for a vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two. Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Number 17, deliberate an act on presentation of proposed fiscal year 22, 2022 and 2023 budget.
Mayor and Council, I'm honored to be here to present this budget to you, although I cannot take any credit for it. With Richard's guidance, you guys and the staff put in a tremendous amount of work to craft a balanced budget, and it required some really tough decisions that I know you all committed to make while making the same commitment to provide the same level of services to our citizen, citizens. So doing more with less, as usual. But this is a 6.64.7 million dollar budget with a tax rate of .378149, which is lower than last year's rate of .392720. And I think you'll be set up for success for years to come. I have a letter here for you that details every, every fund and the significant changes in such. I know you've done a ton of work and asked a lot of questions in budget work sessions, but Katie and I will do our best to have any questions you have remaining answered. But I don't want to read the letter to you. You can read that on here.
All right. We have questions, comments? For the benefit of the public, this is not first reading of an ordinance passing a budget. This is accepting the budgets. Where I would ask that I have a motion to accept the budget report. I'm sorry.
I move to accept the presentation of the proposed fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget.
I have a motion and a second. Any further question or comment? Call for a vote. Ward one.
You'll be upset that date's wrong on the front cover.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, it's 23.
Hey, it's in red. I read it.
Yeah, I saw it earlier.
The only comment I have, sir, before we call for a vote is, you know, I appreciate the process. It was a good process. We kind of joked before the meeting about not wanting to death by PowerPoint, but I'm a fan of it because the picture tells our story. So although we've spent hours in workshop and have looked through all of this, we still have an obligation to the public to explain those decisions as we move forward. So a couple of pictures never hurts, but I'm good.
Do you have a budget item on a future agenda? We can come back to you and have that conversation at that time.
Okay. All right. We had all the discussion we have. We already vote on it? Call for a vote. I'm accepting. Thank you.
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor, aye.
I move.
I thought we did. I couldn't talk for a minute. Okay. I, I will get through this. I think if I coughed for about five minutes, I'd be all right. Okay. Item number 18, deliberate an act to take a record vote to schedule date for required public hearing on proposed 2022 ad valorem property tax rate for fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget.
Okay, this is my last one, I promised, at least for tonight. So what we're going to do is to set a... That public hearing, Teresa, don't let me get this wrong, on September the 6th, 2022, and in, at that time, we will have our public hearing for the property tax rate. And legislation does require a record vote that we are going to hold our public hearing at that date. And at this time, we intend to present to you the... That along with the date will be in the public hearing announcement, which will be on our website as well as on Saturday.
All right. Any questions or comments?
Remembering from last year, there was one thing we did which only had one reading and the other one had two. Which is which?
Two, budget has one.
Thank you very much.
Right. Any further questions?
The 26th, the Monday.
Nope. Six, September 6th.
September 6th. Okay, I missed that.
Well, that's the recommendation.
Right, okay.
That'd be a special thing. I move to schedule a date for the required public hearing on the proposed 2022 ad valorem property tax rate for the fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget on September 6th, 2022, at 6:30 PM for the proposed tax rate of 0.378149 cents.
I have a second. Have a motion and a second. Any further question? Call for a vote. Ward one. Just like we did.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. All right. Number 19, reports from council.
This weekend, the second Saturday, with our three small markets set up on Austin Street. We're moving forward to Halloween in the district, and we've already started talking about Christmas in the district. We've got some new, new folks have come in to sell stuff. The old pine grove, we've now had a tech shop. And, um...
Other than that, uh, the only other thing I want to do is more of a personal thing. The VFW, as we all know, has been nonexistent as a physical presence for five years, almost. This week, we are signing paperwork for a new building. And before anybody asks, we will get bingo running as soon as possible. Okay, so stand by for more information. Like I said, we should be closing sometime this week, and then we're going to hit the deck running and take care of veterans and bring bingo, our bingo back to Rockport.
Ward two.
I, I attended the County Stormwater and Flood Plan Management and災灾 Committee meeting that was held yesterday. It was a good meeting. It was my first to attend. It was good to kind of get acquainted with some of the projects that are going on. Of note, there was discussion on the proposed Tulley watershed management plan, and I believe that's going to come back to their next meeting in September for possible action for the committee. We also talked about some possible grant opportunities that would be able to help fund that effort. So, uh, again, just kind of getting settled in and, and a little better understanding of what's going on. And I'll be going out and meeting with staff on Friday and get a tour around Ward two to start talking about some of the existing and proposed projects in that area. And I appreciate Mike putting up your staff on that. And other than that, kids go back to school tomorrow. Be safe. I think I've seen half the town at the various, uh, meet the teachers the last couple of days, and it's great. Everybody looks enthusiastic. Don't know about my kids, but they're going one way or the other. It's all good, sir.
All right. Oh, or three.
Piggyback on, uh, Councilwoman Hales, kids, kids go back to school tomorrow, so watch out for the kiddos on the road. School zones are up, assuming they're all working and everything, but, uh, just watch out for the kiddos in Ward three. Think I have anything else to report. Thank you.
Ward four.
I want to just, I did attend Whistler's Co., Neighborhood, oh, almost a month ago, a couple of weeks ago. I want to say thank you to Chief for showing up, meeting the neighbors, and listening to their concerns. I also attended the HOA meeting today at the Rockport Country Club, and I want to send a great thank you to Mayor for attending and speaking. Also, Mike coming, talking about the drainage projects coming up in the Rockport Country Club, and also the new city manager, Vanessa, for showing up today and introducing herself. And that means a lot to the community when you show up and there's a face, and they're able to ask those questions and be able to get their answers. So I want to say thank you for that. On top of that, that is about it. Again, they're careful of the kids. They're back to school tomorrow. I know a couple of us have kids and they're going back, so we're kind of excited, and that's why we keep talking about it.
Chief, you can have your officers be on the lookout for celebrating parents. Talked to some that plan on taking the rest of the week. If there is nothing else for us to get to, we will go to our executive session. I'm looking, because everybody keeps looking at me every now and then. All right. Uh, city council will hold an executive session pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 551 of Texas Code, a government code, in accordance with the authority contained in Section 551.071, consultations with attorneys seeking the advice of attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer, and on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct to the state bar of Texas clearly conflicts with the chapter Burnside Services, Inc., and number two, Concho Street Drainage Project. We are in executive session at 7:55. 7:55.